All right, so before we get started, can I get a motion to come out of executive session?
Still moved.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, good evening. I am calling the, or this, this meeting of the Collingswood Board of Education is being called to order. Notice of this meeting has been appropriately advertised. We were just in executive session for a personnel issue, but now we're, so we're going to kind of start a little bit out of order. I guess we didn't do roll call though, Bethan, so roll call please.
Mr. Connor?
President.
Mr. Chu?
Here.
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Ms. Mello?
Here.
Ms. Rivera?
Yeah.
Mrs. Savarino?
Here.
Mrs. Sheridan, Celia?
Here.
Mr. Stotts?
Here.
Mrs. Caden?
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so that, now we move to section three. Can, do I have a motion to enter committee of the whole?
Still moved.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
So for this, tonight's session of Committee of the Whole, we thought it would be a good idea to, to do kind of a status update of the reopening or beginning of the school year. So I asked Dr. McDowell if he could kind of put together how things have been going, both with enrollment numbers at the various schools, any building updates, any COVID. I mean, I think that's pretty much, the CDC has said there really aren't any COVID updates anymore, but any of that sort of thing. And then we can feel free to ask questions or, or for clarity on, on any of the things. So, let's turn it over to you.
Okay. So, good evening to everyone. Thank you for being in attendance. So, beginning of the year is always interesting because we're always in a period of flux. As of today, we have hired all but one of our full-time positions, so we are predominantly fully staffed. We have a few part-time lunchroom assistant positions that are still available, but all of our full-time positions, with the exception of one teaching position, has been filled. So, we are very thankful to our Personnel Department and to our school leaders for doing an outstanding job to fill their vacancies and source for potential vacancies. We are also thankful to all of the staff who led the summer camps this August. We had 241 students participate in the kindergarten through grade five summer camps at both the Tatum and the Sharp Elementary School campuses, and we had 143 students participate in the grade six through nine program. Special thanks to Mr. Wiltsi for coordination of summer camps and all of the staff who so graciously manned the camps even in the midst of extremely warm temperatures. In, in terms of enrollment, our projected enrollment for this current year, we would, we saw an increase of almost 170 students across grade levels through K through 12. As of last week, we have almost filled all pre-K and kindergarten seats, give or take two spots. This indicates the district's commitment to early childhood education, as well as the fact that this time last year, we had about 20 to 24 seats that were available. So families are enrolling in Collingswood and they're actually doing it, they're not waiting until the last minute, so we're very thankful from a planning perspective so students know what site they'll be attending. In addition to just a series of professional developments, so from a district perspective, all of the administrators will be participating tomorrow in part two of their leadership retreat, where we'll be looking at areas that directly affect schools. We'll be looking at some of the goals and objectives set forth with the new strategic plan. We'll be looking at COVID practices and protocols, which will be scaled back pretty dramatically, given where we are within the pandemic. In addition to having targeted discussions and planning about what back-to-school nights look like, what the openings of schools should be, and how are we preparing to receive students. In addition to, on September 1st, which is the official opening day for all of staff, we will have all of the Collingswood and Oakland staff here at the auditorium for our opening day, where we will celebrate the new year, we will celebrate each other, we'll introduce some of the new staff, some of the new initiatives, and then we will be dividing up into different groups of educators for a full day of targeted professional development. And on day two, faculty and staff will be in schools setting up to welcome children the following week. We are excited from a curricular perspective. We are launching a new engineering program. Collingswood was one of nine sites in New Jersey to receive the Building Capacity Grant. This is a grant that is focused on bringing career and technical education programs to schools, and the program that we identified and staffed for and will be launching in a few short weeks is an engineering program that we're really excited about. It builds off of the students that have expressed moving into the information technology field. We have a cadre of students who have excelled in computer science and cybersecurity, and we believe that this will be a good complement to the services that are already provided. In addition, we are introducing at the elementary level, American Sign Language, as a language for our earliest learners to begin learning, and we'll be partnering with TCNJ in order to, to not just build curriculum, but also build capacity, as well as a pipeline, to be able to add additional value and enrichment in elementary grades. Those are the high-level updates for this evening. Open to, oh, one final thing. The, a question was asked about the learning acceleration teachers and the MTSS teachers. So this past year, as a school district, we made a priority to, to take a more equity-based lens and allow schools to identify where there were areas of need, that resources needed to be allocated. And as a result, schools identified specific positions to provide more targeted support to students. So, shifting out of remediation, we're moving into an era of acceleration. This is where there will be coaches working with teachers in order to identify a more personalized approach for students, as well as looking at students who need more targeted intervention with our MTSS staff, where they'll be providing additional, more intensive supports for students who still continue to struggle. So we were able to leverage our grant funds to support all of those positions. Many of the positions were filled internally, but we were also very fortunate to welcome a little over 60 new faculty and staff this year in our hiring season. And on August 15th and 16th, we welcomed all of those educators with our new staff academy. Some of them are seasoned educators, some are, some are brand-new. So it was a really good mix, and we're really excited to have them join the team. And I'm now open for questions.
I just had a question. It seems like we're out of the pandemic, but I see our, our chairs are spaced out here. Are there any limitations that are going to be in place at the school COVID-related going forward this fall?
So we, we know a lot more now than what we did this time two years ago. So some of the, the COVID practices that have been alleviated or relaxed are social distancing. Social distancing is no longer part of the guidance. Universal masking is no longer part of the guidance, except in situations where there's an active outbreak, or an individual has been exposed to COVID. So what that means specifically in, in many of our schools is the need to have multiple or extra lunches is no longer essential. The need to have students spaced so far apart from each other, sometimes preventing them from having ongoing collaboration and te, and team-building efforts is also not a thing. Notification will be dramatically altered. For example, if a student or staff member in a classroom tests positive for COVID, notification will go to that classroom, and the notification will be directing individuals to monitor symptoms for the next 10 days, and should they begin feeling sick or demonstrating some of those symptoms, please get tested and isolate until it's confirmed that they are negative. So we'll see a significant scaling back of the COVID speech in this new year.
Real quick, just along those lines, so, because I remember this coming up last year when we were maybe going to scale back notifications, is there a way that then the afters, the Healthy Kids Before/After Care Program will be able to contact trace, and if that, the person that tested positive was also at one of those things, the kids that were there would also be notified to be aware, I guess? Is that, or is that not something we have control over?
Probably not something we have control over. I mean, we will be sharing our protocols with Healthy Kids, and Healthy Kids will probably have something very similar, but they're, they're a separate entity, and so we will strongly encourage.
They, if a child is enrolled in school and in Healthy Kids, right, like, more likely than not, the parent is notifying Healthy Kids also, or they're reaching out for an absence to find out what's going on. I would, I would be very reluctant to share what could be considered confidential medical information about a child's illness to non-district employees, unless there's a very well-written agreement between Healthy Kids and the district in sharing that kind of information. Like, even vaccination records and things like that, they should be collecting that themselves, more likely than not.
We can, we can encourage.
A separate question pertaining to summer school. I know that we got feedback saying that there were, there weren't enough seats offered because we had limited seating. I'm wondering, out of these numbers, what was our capacity percentage, maybe, that we filled? Out of the 100%, was it 80? Was it 90?
So, capacity was based on the number of staff that we could secure in order to supervise children. So, we did have, there, there was a set budget. So when we initially received the funds last year, we allocated the funds for two years, with a goal of our summer camps being a constructive and a fun way to re-engage students with their schools, have fun with each other and have fun with staff, to lessen the level of anxiety of the return to school in a COVID-laden environment. So this was year two. Our numbers are very similar this year as to what they were last year, give or take a, a few students, but it was really based on the number of faculty that were available and willing to actually work at the camps.
I understand that. I guess I was wondering, since we got the feedback of, of, from families that they wanted more slots, and people didn't make the cut for the deadline, I'm wondering if we had close to 100% full seats based on our capacity, or if we ended up with extra slots, anyway?
We had a, we had a very small percentage of folks who signed up and didn't show.
Okay.
So, I, I can't give you an exact percentage, but I can, I can follow up and, and get the exact percentage.
I was just wondering, since there was so much interest, if people followed through?
Okay.
And if, because if, if, yeah, if we were, if we were able to do this again, maybe a waitlist or something like that would be good for those situations. I was just curious as a parent, also, to see how that worked out. Thank you.
I do know that, just from a parent's perspective, not from students that, or from the school board, that they did say, at least at the elementary one, I can't remember for the, the middle school one, that if your child, like, if you weren't going to be able to attend either at all or for both weeks, to let them know immediately, because then they would be reaching out to those on the waitlist. So hopefully that, that part happened if, if the, if the, the families notified them ahead of time and just didn't show. But they did seem to have some sort of system in place if, if families were able to, to let them know ahead of time.
Excuse me. Dr. McDowell, I, I believe you said there were two open seats between pre-1st and kindergarten?
Ye, yes.
Are they kindergarten seats or are they pre-1st seats?
Well, we've got two kindergarten and two preschool.
Oh, okay, so there are four altogether, okay. Thank you.
And so to kind of follow that line of thinking, so when we say there's two open seats, we obviously aren't turning families away that come and register post those two seats. So what, what are the implications for the pre-K and kindergarten classes when enrollment, when, I guess pre-K, we, we could say we're at capacity. Is that correct?
Yes, for pre-K, once we reach capacity for pre-K, then any new, with the exception of students, there, now, there are, are a few seats that are, are being held exclusively for students with IEPs, but in terms of completely open seats, it's, it's two. General education preschoolers would then go to a waitlist, or then be referred to one of the providers with space within our network.
But for kindergarten, we're not going to be turning those students away. So what are the implications for, for our classes with that?
So, with kindergarten, depending on how many additional students come in, what we could see, is we could see additional staff be hired to help support supervision. If we saw a miraculous 20, 25 more kindergartners, we would need to open an additional kindergarten class.
Is there anywhere in this district that has space to open a kindergarten class?
No. No.
Okay. So it's either, it would either be just for reality, not, not trying to like, do a doomsday sort of thing?
Reality, we would have to unfortunately increase the number of children in, across multiple kindergarten classrooms, add an instructional assistant. So you would see class, kindergarten classes with 25, 26, 27 children.
And is this, this is exclusively a pre-K and kindergarten issue right now? We're not seeing overcrowded classes in the first through fifth grade at all?
Predominantly a, a pre-K through first grade.
Okay.
Second grade, I think we're, we're still in a, in a good spot. Third grade, we're teetering. Fourth and fifth grade are in line with what they've been in previous years.
Is there a cap for kindergarten? Like, I know that if, if we go up to like what you're saying, like 25, and I, I know that, like, then you would get an, an educational assistant in there, but is there an actual cap, or is there no cap for however many students could be, kindergartners could be in a?
One classroom.
In one classroom?
I'm sorry, Bethan?
I think it's 25 also.
So, it's, it's 25, and you can add, I mean, and we've got a union president here. You can add an additional individual with an educational assistant.
Right.
Anyone who has been in a kindergarten classroom, it actually really should be closer to 20 or less for, for that type of experience. But what we're seeing is a significant increase in families moving to Collingswood, which is a good thing, but we're constantly seeking ways to better utilize our space.
Right. Is the max?
The, so there are two spots open for pre-K, and are they being filled, or is the waitlist empty?
We, families are registering daily.
Okay, okay, okay. And then for the testing, is there still going to be, I guess, district-run testing, COVID testing this year?
No. No. So the state lifted the mandatory COVID testing for faculty and staff that are not up to date on their immunizations, so we will not be continuing that. No. That's also not being recommended. Our nursing, so we met with our, our nursing staff in June in order to, to kind of forecast and identify, oh, there they are, to identify, how do we strike the right balance of protection without overwhelming our families in something that makes the most sense. So I know that they've been working on that. We will solidify that over the next two weeks. My goal is to, to release a, a one-pager to families about what we're doing, something that you can put on a fridge, that is a, a quick reference guide to make it easier for families to be able to navigate, so that we can try to rebuild and get to our next normal.
I just wanted to clarify something, less so for board members, who I think are probably more aware of it, but just to others listening, that when you were talking about the, the new American Sign Language program in the elementary schools, that is in place of what, what used to be Spanish as a special, correct?
That's correct.
So that's, so it's a, it's a new language that, that students in elementary school will be learning. Does anyone else have any questions or comments about the, the opening of school this year?
So, are we still, assuming we're following the CDC guidance on isolation and quarantine timelines and masking when people test positive and all that, I don't think it has anything to do with vaccination status, but are we still going to be pushing out, like, vaccine clinics? Are we still requesting vaccination documentation from children, or anything like that?
So we did not request vaccination information from families. What we asked was that if families wanted to share that during the contact tracing processes, that they were welcome to be able to do that as a, as a means in order to keep students in school. As a district, we have access to the New Jersey Immunization System. So any child that has been, that was born in the state of New Jersey and received their immunizations in New Jersey, school districts, or our, our school district and many others have direct access to those records, unless a family opted out at birth for their child not to be in the state immunization system. So majority of our, our families, our nurses had access to that, and therefore they didn't have to, to ask or request additional information, because it automatically uploads into the student information system within Genesis.
Anyone else? So before we, we close out Committee of the Whole this evening, I just wanted to take a minute to acknowledge the massive loss that our district suffered earlier this month with the sudden passing of Lisa Winkler, our middle school and high school art teacher. It's, it's a huge loss for this district. She was, she was a treasure for, for our district, for so many students, a tremendous loss for her family, and I, I didn't want this, this board meeting to go on without us taking a moment to, to recognize the immense contribution that she made to our district, and what a huge hole that has been left, and just that our, our thoughts and love go out to her, to her family. On that somber note, I'm going to ask for a motion to exit Committee of the Whole. And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, next on our agenda, we have Section Four Presentations, our HIV Self-Assessment Report, given by Mr. Gursik.
Good evening, everyone. Joe Gursik, District Supervisor of School Safety and Student Services. Yearly, the district has to present its HIV report card, our self-assessment, on how all of our schools performed over the past year, which I completed. And they included such things as making sure that all staff are certified, that there's age-appropriate programs and assemblies for the students related to harassment, intimidation, and bullying, make sure there's enough staffing as far as anti-bullying specialists, which are the people that actually investigate the claims of HIV, along with making sure that each administrator takes a workshop yearly on school law, and that it includes HIV and prevention, and also to make sure that timelines, which is extremely important are followed, that it's put in writing in two days and within 10 days, completely investigated with determinations, and then sent to our superintendent's office. I'm glad to report that all of our schools met or exceeded all of the requirements that were put forth to us. And this year, my plan is to continue working on those ones that are just meets expectations, such as hiring more anti-bullying specialists. The ones that we have are incredible. They investigate very thoroughly. They reinvestigate. There were some issues this year with student attendance, which pushed a couple of our cases past the 10-day window, but they were on it. So we're looking to get people trained and to make sure that programs and assemblies are age-appropriate and documented, and that we're all actively looking to find more programs for all the schools to share, not just one or two. Any questions from the board?
On the, the self-assessment, the scores are zero through three.
That's correct. With two, two being meets expectations, and three being exceeds expectations.
So then one would be?
One would be partial, and then zero is it's nonexistent.
How many anti-bullying specialists do we currently have?
It's a, in our, on our list, there's a mixture of Oakland people. I believe in the district, there's eight.
Okay.
I'm looking to get about three more quality people that are, that, that want to do it.
And are these, is that an extra duty? Like, is this a teacher?
It's something that, they, they need, they, there is time that we have to allot for them to, to be trained.
Uh huh.
That's one of the, that's one of the criterias, and we're also looking for someone that's willing to do it and, and do a nice job with it.
Right, would it be existing staff?
Yeah, so no, there, I'm sorry, yes, existing staff. We have some of our, at the secondary level, our school climate officers, the elementary, we have a child study team member does a fabulous job. All of them, they're, they're very thorough with everything. No. No, it's just, it's just something added. It's, it's not something they're dealing with on a regular basis, but to do it right, it, it takes, it can take some time. Thank you. Mrs. Caden, I, I thank the board for its timely notification of the passing of Mrs. Winkler. I supervised her, and my kids went to preschool together, and I appreciate the board doing it so respectfully. Thank you.
Moving on to Section Five, Future Dates and Miscellaneous Information. You can check out, there's quite a few dates from the beginning of schools to the single session days, and then the list of all of the, the back-to-school nights for the month of September.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. Is there a correction?
I do, no, I just want to draw attention to the big bolded one on there.
Oh, thank you.
We did change the September board meeting from September 26th to September 27th in honoring in, for Rasha Shana.
Yes, thank you for that reminder.
So just everybody know, September's will be Tuesday, September 27th, and it's bolded, but yeah, there is a change.
Yes, right, that is, that is a change from our normal Monday meetings. Thank you for that reminder. Moving on to Section Six, Routine Board Business, Motion to Approve the Minutes of the June 2022 Regular Board Meeting. And a second?
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
And, so now we are at And so now we are at section seven, which is our first opportunity for public comment. The purpose for this public comment section is to discuss items listed on the agenda. Additional, more general comments may be made later in the meeting. The public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. The intent of public comment is to give the community the opportunity to provide feedback to the board. We will be actively listening and taking notes so that we can take all that is being said into consideration. If appropriate, clarifying comments may be made at the end of the public comment section. For more detailed responses to concerns, communication may go out later in the week by the appropriate staff members or administrators, or be discussed by the board during future committee meetings. If anyone would like to make a public comment at this time, you can stand, state your name and address, and please keep your comments to five minutes or less. So it doesn't look like anyone is standing up. So moving on to section eight, the superintendent's report, Dr. McDowell.
So attached for you is the enrollment report for June. June of 2021 enrollment was 2211, and June of 2022 is 2223, with both of the, both the June and the five-year attached. 8.02 is the school safety drill report for the month of June, and 8.03 is the suspension report for the middle school for June of 2022. And there is no bullying report for the month of June.
And we're moving over section nine, the student board member report, because we will not, our new student board members will not be joining us until September. So section 10, the business administrators, administrator, excuse me, board secretary report, Ms. Coleman.
All right. Item 10.01, I have your June and July monthly transfer reports. Item 10.02 is your June and July financial statements, your board secretary treasures report, and your cash reports. 10.03 is your student activity cash reports for the months of June and July. 10.04 is your June financial statement for your food service. 10.05 is a listing of the purchase orders that have been issued in the months of July and August. And 10.06 is a listing of the warrants paid in July on your behalf, and a listing of the warrants to be paid tomorrow morning. And if, okay, I just, I'm going to read a PSA. So the Oakland Police Department is looking for crossing guards, so I told them I would also reach out to our community. So if anyone is interested in some part-time employment, morning and afternoon, about three hours a day, hour and a half each, please reach out to the Oakland Police Department. Their app, their applications can be obtained from the police department between nine and seven. Okay. And then Mr. Craig is absent, so.
I was gonna say, I thought you were gonna offer to just do that.
I will offer to also do the finance buildings and grounds report. All right. Item 11.02 through 11.09 are all of those items up for approval for the months of June and July that I mentioned in my report. Item 11.10 is, we need approval for toilet room waivers and our annual temporary facility request for the preschool programs that we rent from Oakland and the First United Methodist Church. These are annual facility approvals we have to send to the county office. The county office was out last week and did already inspect the spaces, so they just need a board resolution. Item 1111 is accepting the ESEA grant, and that is the former No Child Left Behind grant, that's your Title I, Title II, and Title IV grants. Item 11.12 goes along with the ESEA grant acceptance, federal, all states, any school staff that we're paying through federal funds, their their names and the percentage of their salary paid by the federal grant needs to be approved by the board. Item 11.13 is accepting the IDEA grant, again, another grant, this is your your grant for special ed services. 11.14 is setting the lunch prices for the school year, and no, it's not a typo. It says reduced zero lunch zero. The governor declared that any child that applies for and is eligible for a reduced meal, they will just be free. So that is not a typo. Item 11.15 is we're approving the Aetna School Employee Guidance Program. We will be providing an employee assistance program, and it's going to be provided from our healthcare provider. So that will be available to staff in the start of the school year. 11.16 is our budget season calendar that we're setting. As you know, I do budget 24/7 every day of the week, every day of the year, but it's setting the budget season calendar through next, next June. 11.17 is approving a general healthcare resources and education agreement. They provide us instructional assistance for special ed children. So if our contract, if ESS is not able to find an assistant, then we reach out to GSR. 11.19 is a shared service agreement with Oakland, where Oakland, we are going to be sharing 25% of their assistant principal because we have some of our preschool classes in the Oakland School Building. 11.20 is just approving the plumbing, plumbing supply bid. We're gonna award the listing of the plumbing supplies to Harry's Plumbing and Heating. Sorry, it's a long one. 11.21 is approving an RFP for an outside group to come in and do a review of our special ed programming in the district. 11.22 is annual approval of our technology services agreement with Audubon on an as-needed basis, and that's our former director of technology, went to Audubon, so every now and then we need to call him and pick his brain. So that is for that. Item 11.23 is a parental student transportation contract. This is for a child is placed with a guardian, and the guardian drives the child to school. 11.24 is a partnership with the physical, physical edge. This came in from Mrs. McPartland. This group is going to be providing professional development for our health and PE departments. And with that being said, I'm looking for approvals for 11.02 through 11.24.
So moved.
Ooh. Questions or comments from board members?
Get a question. My question is about item 11.12. Underneath sharp, there's a few, few things marked as like Odyssey of the Mind. Is that more, it's not the actual program, correct? It's more just like a Makerspace?
The same idea.
Like, so it's in the idea?
Correct, yes, correct.
Gotcha. Okay, I just was, I didn't know if it was connected to it or not.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
I just had a question about the lunch prices. I know kids and families haven't been paying for lunch for the past several years, and I don't remember. How much has this gone up? Do you know over the last?
I believe it's, I can go back, I think it's 25 cents. It's been like three years. But yeah, we waited to set the prices to see what was going to go on with inflation and the cost of gas. I'm hoping we did the right thing with waiting to set the lunch prices, but I guess we'll find out very shortly.
I have a question about item 11.16, I think it is, the budget timeline.
Yes.
And and how that differs from last year's budget timeline. You know, I was looking at last year's alongside this year's, and I think maybe one of the major changes is is that there is develop and host budget training sessions as we continue to fine-tune our equity-based budgeting approach in September.
Correct.
Can you speak more of Dr. McDowell or or Ms. Coleman about?
I can start off, and Dr. McDowell can piggyback. We, as you know, last year, we started a zero-based budgeting approach. And no surprise to the board, there were some hiccups trying to, you know, get it, get everything done in time. So we're going to fine-tune it. We're meeting tomorrow is our second administrative retreat, where I'm going to start rolling out some budget expectations and go over some of the things I found in the last year with regards to budget, so we can kind of fine-tune it and set our expectations so that there's, we're not setting the expectations late. It's going to set before the school year even starts. So they have a very clear idea of the, what I consider to be a deliverable zero-based budget is delivered to me before Christmas.
So this is basically the the additional support that the, that is being provided to each of the school leadership teams to make sure that the budgeting process runs more smoothly than, I guess, last year?
So, yeah, yes, smoother than last year. Budget, the budget process will never run smooth. We are fighting against a push and pull. There's a need, then there's a want. So one of the things that we're going to be working with our leaders through the equity lens is how do you work collectively with your staff to really drill down, look at the data, and identify what are the needs of your students and the needs of your staff? And what are some of the things that you may need to de-implement in order to make space for the new needs that you've just recently articulated? There's a learning curve when it comes to the process, but there's also going to be additional checks and balances in terms of making sure that staff are intimately involved in the development of their site-based budgets, and that we are helping them navigate through the tension of of all of those processes. So when we say an equity-based lens, that's really what we mean. So the concept of zero-based budgeting is not a new concept. It's existed for about 30 years. So what you do is instead of saying, well, this is what we spent last year, and this is what we're going to spend this year, well, your needs are different this year than they were last year. So when you start at at zero, or you start at what's the need, and then build from there, then the picture begins to be more clear. So our goal is to begin starting the training, developmental process, the involvement process sooner, so that schools have a longer period of time in order to make sure that they've addressed all of the needs of their students and their staff, and that it's been properly communicated about what those needs are, what those priorities are, so that by December, we're all in a good place. And then once we actually get the allocation, we can just do fine-tune and tweaks rather than reconstructive surgery.
And and seeing, looking at this calendar, it says that February is when the Finance, Buildings, and Grounds Committee gets the update about the budget. When will, when will be the first time that, I guess, the whole board should expect to hear about the state of the budget?
I start with the Finance Committee, obviously, at like January, and I'll start if we do a board retreat. Typically, I've, I start with revenue projections. I say February for the full board, question mark, dependent on state aid.
Gotcha.
Because that's usually when the governor gives his budget addresses, late February. Forty-eight hours after is when we get state aid. That's when I know if this is like a happy day and my budget is balanced, or if it's a, oh, I need to talk to Dr. McDowell before I present everything to the board. That's why I do February, question mark, but definitely end of February. All through March, the board will be intimately involved with what's in our budget.
Yeah, I see it says January here. I misread that. And then one other thing is, is I know that the the programs of study for the high school, it's pretty intimately tied with the budgeting process, right? And so it, is there, like, when is that programs of study list going to come out for students to start looking at, or families to start looking at for next year?
So right now, the counseling department, they've been working on a new counseling plan. We will be presenting, so they're currently refining it. So I've, I've seen the first draft this month. They're currently refining it. In our committee processes for the board, we'll actually be putting that up for approval for September. But that's the counseling plan K to 12. In terms of the data collection, so the process at the school level will really start with surveying students based on interest, but taking it a step further and making sure that students understand the reason why they're being surveyed is to determine what courses will or will not be offered next school year. So once that data has been tabulated, then it's a matter of actually presenting what some of that data is, and then that serves as the foundation for the development of their program of study, which we would like to have a solid draft by January.
And then we would, the board would also see that draft in January, or would we be waiting until March or so?
No, oh, no, it'd be sooner, much sooner, much sooner than that.
Okay. All right, thanks.
So it sounds like the goal, which I think is a fantastic one, is aside from surprises coming from the state, the goal is no, no one would be super surprised by, meaning, and I'm talking about like teachers and staff and administrators and the board, everyone's kind of on the same page much sooner than than later, because they've, right, the board gets informed a little bit later, but the the staff and the teachers and the administrators have been having discussions really starting from once they get the school year rolling, right?
We're adding a new process this year. It's Superintendent Advisory Council. There will be representatives from every school. We'll all be meeting at the same time. So when we start talking about these district-wide initiatives, every campus will have representation in order to feed into what will ultimately translate into a recommendation from me to the Board of Education. So what we're, we're doing is we're expanding our distributed leadership model, because I believe that we've got one mission, but many leaders. And in order for us to make sure that we're not ignoring the needs of some to make space for the others, we have to have everybody in the room at the same time. So we'll have all of our elementary, our middle, and our high school folks in the same room at the same time, teachers, instructional assistants, administrators, 50 to 60 folks, having some of these conversations and helping us to to be better coordinated when we start talking about budget priorities, when we start talking about where the data is really leading us and where we should be allocating resources, so that schools have some level of foundation to begin with, instead of starting from scratch and trying to guess what they should be or shouldn't be funding. And then that goes back to the school, to the full faculty of each campus, for them to really hash out what does that mean for their school.
Is there a plan, or can there be made a plan to get student voice involved in that advisory council, beyond just taking surveys, but opportunities for?
So the middle school and the high school will be establishing a student voice action teams, which will be participate, actively participating in the process, in addition to student government for both the middle and the high school.
So, sorry, I just had one more quick question for you. 1121, the RFP for the review of the special ed programming, is that a review, or an audit, excuse me, of kind of effectiveness of programs? Is that like a comprehensive audit of of how everything is going?
Yes, I'll let Dr. McDowell probably go in more thorough, but yes, a review of everything?
Okay.
Yeah.
So I would caution us against the use, the utilization of the word audit.
Okay.
So special education review, you look at infrastructure, you look at structures, you look at partnerships, you also look at expenditures, and the most important piece is then you compare all of those to student outcomes. So what, the questions that we're really trying to answer is how how effective are the supports that we're putting in place? And are there some things that we could be doing better? What are the cost drivers that are not reaping the appropriate return on the investment? And are there some other things that we could think about that would increase outcomes for for kids? We need an unbiased third party in order to to be able to collect that data and offer us strong recommendations that are then actionable, that we can then bring back first to the department, and then to the Board of Education for consideration.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Yes, except for 1118, I abstain.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera? Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharon and Celia? Mr. Stotts?
Yes, except item 1123, where I abstain. I don't think I should be voting on that one.
Gotcha. Mrs. Caden?
Yes. Moving on to section 12, the curriculum committee. Ms. Henry?
The curriculum committee oversees and approves district curriculum assessment programs, as well as field trips, home instruction, co-curricular programs, and the school calendar. We have four items for, up for approval tonight. 12.02 is a high school field trips. 12.03 is approval of this year's district curriculum. 12.04 is approval of the high school fall play, and 12.05 is approval for the high school spring musical. And that's it. We're seeking approval of items 12.02 through 12.05.
Is there a motion? And a second? Questions or comments from board members, but first, I just wanted to highlight that I just think it's really great that the high school fall play, if you, if you read down, I encourage everyone to come see it, because it is written by students, or maybe it doesn't say it on the thing, but I, we know, it said it on our thing. It's written by by students this year, which I think is a, is a pretty amazing thing. Any other questions or comments from board members? Yes, our student, our, some seniors. Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor? Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes, except item 12.04 where I see.
Mrs. Sheridan Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes, except item 12.03 where I vote no.
Mrs. Caden?
Yes. Moving on to Section 13, the Personnel Committee, Ms. Sheridan Celia.
The Personnel Committee reviews all recommendations for teaching and staff employment, considers co-curricular employment, and considers all professional development opportunities for all staff members. There are 66 items on the agenda for this evening. 13.02 through 13.10 are faculty and staff resignations. 13.11 is a New Jersey family leave request. 13.12 is an FMLA request. 13.13 through 13.30 are new teachers, nurses, and other staff members for full-time employees. 13.31 is a part-time preschool teacher appointment. 13.22, 32, is the appointment of a 12-month secretary. 13.33 through 13.37 are long-term substitutes and replacement teachers as well as two secretaries. 13.38 is the appointment of an HVAC technician. 13.39, mental health staff coordinator. 13.40, social work interns. 13.41 is the appointment of a school climate officer. 13.42 is the assistant athletic director stipends. 14.43 are the appointment of elementary permanent substitutes. 13.44 are the appointment of lunchtime and playground assistants. 13.45 through 13.50 are revised staff contracts. 13.51 is the approval of Debra Vesper to complete field experience. 13.52 is staff transfers within the district. 13.53, student practicum placement. 13.54 is course overload for two different teachers. 13.55 through 13.57 is the non-athletic extra-duty pay stipends for the high school, middle school, and elementary schools respectively. 13.58 is high school athletic, athletic extra-duty pay stipends. 13.59, summer nursing staff. 13.60 is the, this past year's ESY summer program. 13.61, summer accelerated learning camps at the elementary level. 62, the same camps, but a revision to an earlier agenda item. 13.63 is a summer school psychologist appointment. 13.64, summer curriculum development. 13.65, summer building capacity collaboration. 13.66 are the appointment of substitutes and tutors. 13.67 is a travel expense report. There's one item on that report. And finally, at 13.70, I'm seeking approval of items 13.0 through, through 13.67.
That was beautifully done. Do we have a motion to approve these items? And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members?
Question about the student practice in general. I see just one name on here. Is that typical for this time of year? I mean, I know that I've reached out to many of these teaching colleges in the area, and year over year, they have less and less students going to college to become teachers. So, I was just curious as to if we're getting less practice in students as a result of that? Is that the case?
I mean, it's systemic. Sorry.
It's systemic. I think that the effects from the pandemic ultimately affected staffing, so there are educator shortages. I mean, it's a national crisis. And then, and, and in terms of in schools of education, they're having challenges where they're not seeing the same number of students enroll in educational programs. So, as an offshoot, we're seeing less and less students. So, one of our goals this year is to partner with more schools so that we have more opportunities to engage with new talent.
I just wanted you to perhaps elaborate to everyone. 13.41, school climate officer, it has nothing to do with global warming, because I don't think so. If you could explain to the public what it is, that'd be great.
So, we currently have three school climate officers currently on the secondary campus. Primary role and responsibility is to maintain a safe and orderly learning environment on campus. They work in partnership with teachers and administration in order to support what could be sometimes disruptive behavior. Given some of the challenges associated with the pandemic, we knew that we were seeing an uptick in some level of behavior, but also the need for more just targeted support. So, we wanted to make sure that we had an additional leader on campus, female, because we believed that there was a gap in culture and climate in some of our young ladies not having a mentor or someone to actually go to for conflict resolution or just general, general encouragement and, and positive behavior support. So, we wanted to rectify that this year.
That title is what formerly was safety officers. We formerly referred to, to those people as safety officers. Now, they're school climate officers?
Yes.
Okay.
I was just going to note that I think you said 13.02 was a resignation. That was a retirement.
Sorry.
Yeah, Ms. Voltona was retiring.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Well, you had 60-something items, so I think.
None overlooked her.
Chris, what, what is, or what does a mental health staff coordinator do?
So, we have, we've been operating an elementary program in the form of counseling services through Jefferson Health. That coordination of services, contact with the families, that's been happening at the elementary. We did not have that same level of support at the secondary level. And as a result, what we saw was a significant uptick in not necessarily disruptive behavior, but dysregulated behavior from students who were struggling. Some students were experiencing anxiety, some students were experiencing depression, some students were in need of additional services, and we did not have formal coordination. So, what that manifested was impromptu meetings in the counseling office or in the nurse's office or in the principal's office in order to be able to direct students and families to where they could get the support that they needed. So, we know that we needed to make a formal investment so that students have a definitive place to be able to go to get additional resources.
Okay. I think I probably misread this. It says mental health staff coordinator, and I thought it was a coordinator for the staff, but it's not. It's for the students.
Yeah, it's kind of like the extension of the, the elementary mental health program that we went out for a question vote for. We're extending that to the, to the secondary level.
Yeah, no, I'm okay with that. The, the assistant athletic director stipends, do we have assistant athletic directors? Did we have them last year?
No, we did not.
So, this is, these are new positions? We're, we're increasing our management capabilities?
They're stipend positions, so it's, they're not salaried. The issue is, our current athletic director is also the assistant principal, so she can't work 24/7 without us burning her out. So, she's, she asked for two staff members to step up and help different seasons of the year, sporting events, to step up so that she could, you know.
How did our last athletic director handle that position?
I can't answer that.
The last, the last athletic director, their job was athletic director. They had no academic or student support responsibilities. It was purely athletics.
And what's different with the athletic director now?
She, her day job is assistant principal, in charge of instructional leadership, staff support, student, student climate.
So, maybe we should have thought about hiring somebody as the athletic director so that that frees her up for her day job.
This is much more affordable.
Yeah, well, I hear what you're saying, but we're hiring, again, we're hiring more managers. We're, we're getting more chiefs than we are Indians again. And this is something since it's, they're, they're new positions, probably should have come to the board as a, you know, we'd like to do this, not here approve this, slaving for these people.
It went to the Personnel Committee, so it did go to the board.
I'm sorry?
It went to the Personnel Committee, so it did go to the board.
That's not the board. I understand the Personnel Committee, yes, but, and the Personnel Committee had a little bit to do this month, for sure.
My understanding is that the, the, our athletic director has a, has a specific budget, and within the budget process this year, she specifically budgeted for these two positions that essentially are, are what we would, you know, we, throughout the year, right, kind of are paying for various athletic help.
Correct. And, and these are new, so we did reach out to the CEA and, and Mr. Pence to, to agree to the addition of this EDP in the budget so that they had extra support at the athletic complex after hours.
But it's not adding, this was within her budget, so we are, so extra money is not being spent for this.
Correct. Yes, she did budget for it. Correct.
And these are not management positions, are they, technically?
Technically, no.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Real quick, for, for our note-taking purposes, can you remind us who did the motion and the second? And now, we'll do roll call. Thank you.
Sorry, the secretary had to use the little secretary's room. Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mrs. Sheridan Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
I will abstain for everything on that section.
Mrs. Caden?
Yes. Moving on to Section 14, Policy and Regulations Committee, Ms. Severino.
The Policy and Regulations Committee reviews all updates and changes of district policies and regulations. So, I have the following items for approval. 14.02, we have some policies up for first reading. There is number 143, which is the High School Student Representative to Board of Education. Basically, it's just guidelines for how student reps are chosen and when they can, cannot be present and give input. Quorum, which is 163, that just outlines what is considered a quorum and rules for invoking doctrine of necessity. Basically, when the Board of Ed can act without a quorum. 1511 is the Board of Ed website accessibility ensures that all, ensures that the school district's websites are accessible to those with disabilities. 2415, Every Student Succeeds Act provides federal funds to help all New Jersey students achieve. 32, oh, wait, well, we have one that was abolished, which was 2432, which is the school-sponsored publications that was abolished. 3216 is dress and grooming, and that is actually for teaching staff. It outlines best practices for teaching staff with regards to the topic of dress and grooming. 3270, professional responsibility, outlines the responsibilities of all teaching staff, including lesson plans and attendance at faculty meetings. 4216 is dress and grooming. This is for support staff. 5513, care of school property, basically outline measures that can be taken if students do not care for school property. 5517, school district issued student identification cards. This one adds the New Jersey Hope Line and Crisis Text Line to the back of student ID cards, and I think that we are doing that middle school through high school. And then, 5722, student journalism, outlines criteria for student publication. So, those are the policies that are up for a first read. And then, the policies that are up for a second read are 5430, which is class rank, and 5511, which is dress and grooming for students. And there are no regulations at this time, so I'm seeking approval for items 1402 and 1403.
Is there a motion to approve?
So.
And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members?
Just clarifying that I'm not assuming incorrectly that we're only adding the Help Line information to middle school and higher because elementary school kids don't take their IDs home?
Yes, that's what we have in the policy.
I have a few questions about the, two of the first reading policies. So, first one, I, I don't know that we have an answer, we'll be able to get an answer tonight, but for 1511, the Board of Education website accessibility, my read of it is that potentially any, what it basically says is any PDF files that are uploaded to the website, so that would include the board policies, need to also be displayed in HTML format. And so, I think that's potentially been a, a policy that's been there for a while, but seeing if I could get a follow-up as to whether or not that, that's what that policy means, and if so, if we can get those PDF documents also displayed in HTML format on the website. And then, I'll give you a second to write notes. And then, I have a question about zero, so 163, the quorum one. That's a, that's a modification of the, the revision of the current quorum policy. And I noticed that in the, this revision, it just straight out says that quorum will be six folks, six people. In, in the current standing policy, it says that quorum will be five, except for issues pertaining to the sending school districts as well. So, for example, quorum for elementary school would only be five because only nine members can technically vote on those issues, right? So, my question is, is this, like, is there a reason for this change here in, in this?
Just so that we weren't out of compliance, so.
And I, I can explain the doctrine of necessity a little bit. We don't have this issue here, luckily, but some districts, they have staff that are teachers in other districts, like Mary's, but like, and Fiona, but some districts are very conflicted, so if you're a, a board member who's conflicted, you can't participate in negotiations, and in some cases, you can't vote on the contract, right? So, there's certainly some districts that you're left with maybe two board members that can participate in one of the biggest things you guys are going to do. So, in that instance, the board win and act the doctrine of necessity.
Right.
Which then gives you the ability to, to participate and to, to act.
Right.
That's per your duty.
Yeah, so my, my question isn't with the doctrine of necessity, but with the definition of a quorum for this board. Because as it stands now, the definition of quorum is five, except for issues that also pertain to the sending school districts, so.
I can see, it gets a little strange with the send-receive.
Correct.
The way I count it personally, there's 11 of you. A fully seated board with our sending district rep is 11.
Right.
So, I, I go for six. I consider because the governor, I don't even think it was the governor, it may have been a school law ethics decision, and I'm trying to remember. I think it was a couple of years ago, there were, they limited what sending reps could vote on, right? So, that's why Mr. Stotts always says, except those items marked with an asterisk. But they, they kind of, they opened it up to a lot more items. Back in the, I'm showing my age, but back 25 years ago, Mr. Stotts wouldn't have been able to vote, like, on the school attorney and some very specific items, right?
Right.
But now, things that are more general in nature, like the school attorney, things that service the whole school, not just high school, it freed them up to vote. So, when I look at quorum, I look for six, unless there's something specifically wonky, but I just, as long as I have six board members, I consider us to be in quorum.
So, I just, yeah, I just want to point out that this, this is a, a, this is a, a policy change that does change our definition of quorum. And, I mean, that's fine, but I just want to make sure that's, that's noted, that this, in all cases now, that this policy now says in all cases, our quorum is six and not, not five in some cases.
Right, and that's our current practice, so it's just making it like what we do, yeah.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mrs. Sheridan Celia?
Yes.
Yes, on 1402, no on 1403.
Mrs. Caden?
Yes. Moving on to section 15, miscellaneous. 15.01 is the previous month's HIV report. 15.02 is a job description for the district webmaster. 15.03 is the 2022-23 school year professional development plan for Collingswood School District. 15.04 is the 2223 Collingswood Public School Mentoring Plan. So do we have, are we, excuse me, need approval of items 15.01 to 15.04? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members?
Can you please explain the webmaster job?
And I, I'm gonna do my best, and I'm gonna look at Patrick in the back of there. So anybody's been on our website for the last month, you know, it's, it's changing kind of constantly. We had to update the website and do a lot of things in the background. It, it's very arduous during the school year for the tech team to be continually bombarded with, can you put this on the website? Can you take this off the website? Can you move this from here to there? So we really felt the need to have a webmaster and somebody who was eyeballing the website to make sure that the content is current, it's relevant, the school information is on their correct school page, you'd be amazed what we find, but just that it, it makes sense and that it is ADA compliant and is meeting all the standards that we expect our website to meet. And it's just, I would just rather have a stipend, designate somebody a couple hours a week, one day a week, just full-on, just, just nothing but website so that we know we, somebody's constantly looking at it. So, yeah, that's.
And I believe also with the, oh, sorry, with the strategic plan, with the communications portion of it, that was a recommendation, right?
Correct.
That we have it.
Yes, because this is our biggest tool for communicating with our public, and if they can't get the information or find it easily, then that's a fundamental problem that needs to be corrected.
So it is a part-time stipend position?
Correct, yes, that's all I put in the budget, so.
Thank you for the explanation.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mrs. Sheridan Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes, on 1502 and 1504, abstain on 1503.
Mrs. Caden?
Yes.
Thanks.
Section 16 is our second opportunity for public participation. This is the, the opportunity for more general comments. Quick reminder that all attempts to resolve, or that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. We will be actively listening and taking notes, and if appropriate, clarifying comments will be made at the end of the public participation section. And if you would like to speak, please stand at the microphone, state your name and address, and please keep your comments to five minutes or less.
Hi, my name is Brianna Dougherty. I live at 163 New Jersey Ave. I'm sorry, I'm really nervous. I am a new resident in Collingswood as of March. We moved from Philadelphia. My son is turning five next week on August 29th. I had intended prior to moving here to enroll him in the pre-K program as he, it just isn't ready for kindergarten yet. I'm also an educator myself for 13 years, and he has autism and an IEP in the city of Philadelphia. It was my understanding that the age limit for the pre-K, he turned five, so he wasn't eligible, which I understood and was willing to accept, and I thought I'll just keep him into a private pre-K for one more year and then enroll him next year in kindergarten. But I was told that if I did that, that next year he'll be placed right into first grade without having gone through kindergarten. So I just wanted to express my concern with that and say, not only as his mom, but just as an educator, I don't feel that that's developmentally appropriate. And I know that the surrounding school districts are not following that policy. Audubon, Haddon Township, I've spoken to a lot of other parents just to see what's happening. So it's kind of forcing my husband and I to pay for school again this year, enroll him into a Catholic school or a private school next year, and then move him into the district the following year, which was not what we wanted to do. We moved here for the schools, but, okay, that's it.
So first, welcome to Collingswood. Shoot me, shoot me an email this week and let's, let's talk. Let's talk. Great, thank you.
Just waiting, it doesn't look like anyone else is standing up, so at this time, is there a motion to adjourn? And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you so much for coming this evening, everyone.